Tonight, this town would like us all to pay tribute to us and to have Jerry Lynn from the First Superior Church right next to the town hall to have him go have the implication.
I have just a couple of words to say to the council. Leadership requires two very simple virtues: honesty and courage. Each of you have earned the right to be here today by earning the trust of the people of Bluefield, but along with the honor comes a duty of humility, integrity, and good public service. So that being said, let's settle our hearts for just a moment in prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our town. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with committed love. Give us the spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and the dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or how poor, with the reverence those of your creation deserve. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of each of your children. We ask these blessings as sons and daughters that you have created, confident in your goodness and your love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is in the Bible.
Thank you, Jerry. Jerry happens to be one of the best baseball players we have in the area. Gentlemen, we have, do you have the agenda in front of you? Just some conditions?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to include discussion about the IDA loan number of new business reports.
That would be added, and also removal of High Street discussion. Council retreat discussion in Castle Bridge. Are there any additional corrections or collisions? Gentlemen, if there was a favor, say in the line, say aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Consent agenda, July 14th, George Public Area Meeting Minutes, and July 14th, Council meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? I mean, non-nuclear questions that the Senate presented.
So, the second.
If there was a favor, say in the line, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Want to finish business report, can?
All right, tonight we have the second reading by title of the link of the proposed time ordinance, and if that's okay, I'll be in motion and we'll call a vote on that.
I get it. Second, sir.
Motion to debate second, the public discussion. No call vote, Mr. Jerry?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, it reads, a resolution is directly in the minute and reenactment of the Silence of Chapter 74 is ready and prepared for this town. We'll look at it now. The next thing I have is I need to get a note if we want to take the towns off of the agenda and if the exempt concession is going to be moved to the beginning of the agenda going forward. Usually right now, I put it at the end.
I'll make a motion, a second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Paul and Jerry?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes.
All right, the last thing I have is the budget limits. First one, the purpose is for me that we receive a vice gaming room. Revenue line item is three one zero eight dash nine nine zero three. Gifts and donations, the original budget was twenty-three thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. Your amended budget is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars with a change of six thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. Your expenditure line item is eight one two zero dash five six five seven, special events. Original budget was ten thousand dollars, the amended budget sixteen thousand one ninety-five, a change of six thousand one ninety-five. And then our next one is the purposes for the Appalachian amateur golf tournament sponsorships, that's through Fan Castle. Revenue line item is three five zero one dash one five one two, that's Fan Castle priority reserves. Original budget was zero dollars, the amended budget is five thousand dollars with a change of five thousand dollars. The expenditure line item is one two two zero dash eight two zero three, Appalachian Golf Tournament. Original budget was zero dollars, the amended budget is five thousand dollars with a change of five thousand dollars. And then through the same sponsorships, revenue line item three five zero one dash zero five zero seven, Fan Castle Gifts and Donations. The original budget was ten thousand dollars, the amended budget is ten thousand two hundred seventy dollars with a change of two hundred seventy dollars. And your expenditure line item, one two two zero dash eight two zero three, Appalachian Golf Tournament. Original budget was five thousand dollars, your amended budget is five thousand two hundred seventy with a change of two hundred seventy. And I'll get a motion and we'll call that a vote.
Second.
Motion to debate, second. No call vote, Jerry?
Yes, 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 yes.
Mr. Jerry?
I said yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Ms. Roberts, I think you may come next.
Okay, you guys will recall, I had our oral presentation about the STARS study projects. Talked to planning commission about those, adding those projects to our conference plan so that we'll be able to use that plan in our application for smart scale for this year. So asking for a motion and a vote to amend transportation section of the 2016 evidence of plans and include those projects, please.
A second.
And?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes.
The COVID-19 care grant information, I think Mike sent out a few emails about this. In a nutshell, this is some, the Fear Tech Fund was allocated by Taz County to be distributed to the towns. Our funds are twelve thousand dollars for the town to reimburse for COVID-19 expenses, eighteen thousand to the town for expenses after July 1st, the twelve thousand is before. We have fourteen thousand dollars to reimburse to retail businesses located within the town limits, thirty thousand to reimburse to restaurants, and twelve thousand to reimburse to non-specific businesses, which are other than retail and restaurants or services, this type of thing. There's a whole bunch of guidelines and information that we have to go through. We do have the draft application, some simple things to just, so you guys could be here to ask the public, move to businesses with less than twenty full-time employees. We are required to form a committee, and that committee will approve the application and then come up with, you know, guidelines and other things that they'd like to see from the businesses and recommend the amounts that each business will be approved for. And look at all the applications. So I've got to talk about it, probably maybe five would work. If you'd like my recommendation on who would be on that committee, I would suggest Mike and a council member, me and an IDA member, and then the other towns that's involved in certain things. Do you guys have any suggestions? Has anybody approached you about being interested to be on that committee?
I would just take your recommendation.
Okay, so we'll, Mike and I'll put about five people together. We'll send you guys out an email, and then we'll just keep you updated on the process and applications, and then we'll be in full swing. We are getting a lot of questions, I'm sure you guys are too.
I'll, if you want to put me on.
Oh, you're interested?
Yeah, I'm sure. Is everything in that email, Mike, the same thing she said tonight? So if I put it on my Facebook and let people know that we have this one to go out?
Oh, God, just a minute.
Not right now, but when we do, that's what I'm saying.
There's about a 20-page paper that explains the guidelines.
I won't put the guidelines, I'll say, it's all Mike's.
Yes.
Totally, we have a draft application to be sent out. Once we get together and decide on a committee, tweak it a little bit, we'll send it out. Hopefully by the end of this week, beginning of next week, we can forward it to.
Can you email us something out that's shareable? Once we get it together?
Like tonight?
No, no, I just wouldn't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That way it's in line with everything.
Well, sure, everything else in that, I make sure, I pretend like it's on show, it's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Okay, I think we have one more.
The IDA loan. So I can make that motion, so I'll make a motion that the town loan some thirty thousand dollars to the IDA for the purposes of renovations to Spring Street, 103 Spring Street. That would be paid back not later than 90 days after the discussion of one. So, second.
The motion been made, again, in second. Any further discussion? No call vote, Mr. Jerry?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Town manager report?
Oh, I had just had a couple things. Depot Street event discussion, over the last, I'm, I guess, fifteen, twenty years, the group in the Depot Street area come together and they used to call it Pig Roast. Well, the Pig Roast has then developed into an event. Several hundred people, people come from everywhere. Well, with COVID, they're not going to be able to have it this year. However, I did get a request from one of the people to ask him to continue with the donation, and it's not a cash donation, I want you to understand that. What we do is send an employee with one of the citizens, and we buy gifts up to a certain amount, and those gifts are distributed through the area, and they head it up. We do not give them cash. So they have requested that we continue to do that this year, they'd like to still give the gifts out. Since they're not having any event, I felt that it would be something council would need to vote on.
I'll give that out, I'll make that motion and you go on.
The motion been made, definitely double eight five hundred on this street.
Second.
A second.
Any further discussion? I'd like to say before we vote that I've attended this several years on there in North Side. It's more than a pig roast, it's a homecoming. It's always after the grand baby comes on down, and you'll see hundreds of people from Ohio, Florida, all coming in for a family reunion. As a matter of fact, I sat across from a gentleman a couple of years ago that had rode his motorcycle from North Dakota all the way in for this reunion. So it's really a worthwhile, I would suggest some of the best food that you would ever get. I'd suggest that you, next time we have that, you guys ought to go and people ought to... Okay, with the motion been made, second, all the, let me have a roll call vote, Mr. Jerry?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. All right, Mike?
Just a couple items. Thing Castle Golf Renovations, I signed the agreement to begin the renovations of golf course, they won't start until December, they're going to be staging some equipment here. This renovations are paid through a grant received, we've already received the first installment of a grant of two hundred thousand dollars. We're working through the process to close the bond, we will be borrowing one million dollars over the next, well, it's really six years, but it's five years, at a two hundred thousand dollar a year with the cosigner on the loan. Also, hopefully they'll have it done this year without any closures of any of the course. Okay? Any questions? Next item I have is water CIP update, just to let you know, on the water plant, it would be contract, I think it's contract one with the water plant?
Yes.
Contract one, we're at about seventy-three percent of completion, should be completed by October, middle of October. Also, we've installed probably...
Eleven hundred, well, I don't know, about twelve hundred meters.
About twelve hundred new meters that will be ready to read, and also they'll begin work within the next couple of weeks installing the tower equipment. Hopefully, this will all be installed and working by mid to late October is our date. And after that, then our, you know, we're not required to put a payment in until six months later. Just to let you know, we pay off, just for the public to know, we pay off our bond that ends in February, and then in February, we'll start a payment with the same payment we had before. So all we're doing is rolling this debt over until another payment. And quite a bit of this money, well, about twelve percent of this was free money and low interest. The next item I have on the back is VML Conference, we talked about having a retreat, we'll work on that also. I was contacted, there's a group that normally does a car show every year, however, with everything going on, they were looking for an open place, hopefully they might continue to do this year after year. On August 8th, they're going to have a car show at Grand Rec Park, and it should be done by around four o'clock. I contacted Little League, they didn't have anybody scheduled for that time period, so hopefully this event can come off and it'll be a good, good event. The only other thing is, is maybe we need citizens comments.
Citizens comments?
Yeah, that's what I...
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that was covered, I have a tendency to get ahead of myself. Citizens comments. God's sake, Wolford, as you all know, live in St. Edward. I've got a couple, three things. One is this IDA, I mean, Jay's requesting, that's not a problem, I see, except for one thing. At work, you're not going to have to be it. If we're going to put public money into it, then it needs to go out to be it. This goes as she had on, she said, it's my contractor out of Laxbury, you had all the annual licensing. There may be a contractor in Pierce who might like to bid on that. It may or may not have all the annual licensing. The normal procedure for that would have been a general contractor to ask his own subs to give him quotes. This has been one of the problems, you know, I've been a contractor for a long time, I've got fifty-six years of experience in it. I see a lot of things here, kind of following. If we're not going to let the guys locally know about it, how in the world are they ever going to bid on something like that? Now, if you go looking for them, you can't find them, you're not going to find too many contractors, like the guy in Laxbury or like I was, that had every endorsement on the contractor licenses that he's given. They're few and far between. Typically, you'd have a general building contractor, then you put it out to his sons, and they would bid him, and then he would submit to bid you with required bond. And I've said about that, but that's our money, and it should be, it should be the public or something like that. I'm sorry to slow down early, hopefully you got the ground next to this. You got a tough rate hunt, but I think it's pretty much kind of up from what I see. Earlier this evening, I gave Jared a couple sheets, one was for Chuck and one was for Ron. Did you get yours?
Yeah.
Yeah. As I told you, gentlemen, five, six months ago, I was going to, with the purchase of Fan Castle, I was going to keep catching an eye on the bidding and stuff. Well, I've done that, and I'm going to tell you right now, that birth bid is the biggest can of worms that I have seen in probably the past twenty-five years of bids. It's accurate information. It's the bid bonding and bid requirements should have never been put enough away, they were to give a bid bond and bid and then negotiate for lowest contractor if you're going to nominate the bonds. Because if somebody, it looks to me like somebody was involved in writing this proposal that came on bid. Now, as I understand it, we had three bids, one local, one out to Aswell, one from somewhere else. From what I'm determining, you've got two Lexus bids with the skills of a Lexus builder, and you've got a Ugo bid with Ugo parts. The way it's being quoted, you've got, you've got a grade A material, grade A contractor's building, and a grade C material with a contractor that's put two roofs on, and this contractor, as I understand it, has never put the PVC roof on. And you've got Cadillac roof, you don't need Cadillac roof, not for what you're doing, because that PVC is really resistant to grease, and I understand, but you're not the Burger King, you're not the Donalds, you're not the Rainwater. You've got a little restaurant out there, that's to generate some risk, but you could be better off to put EPBM roof on, which is the black rubber, it's far more durable, far more long-lasting, and it's a heck of a lot less expensive, and a lot easier to fix when it breaks. The PVC roof that you spent is difficult to put on, is also very nearly irreparable, it's difficult to repair, dump home with. And the other thing that you guys have got to be aware of, my grown stuff, you've got about 70 roof penetrations up there, all of them are close. It's a nightmare. Somebody that doesn't have the experience to put that roof on, doesn't need to be doing, particularly with the PVC. The street kind of the EPBM, EP something or another else, I hear a million times I've spotted these in the PVC. And as I understand it, a contractor with a low bid gets more care in town and very serious warranty issues, and that's just an EPBM roof. So you might want to take a real good look. The one thing that you did when you informed the contractors at the preview, that we may or may not require a bid bond, I mean, well, we're going to require a bid bond.
That's incorrect, it's a...
Well, I know, but listen.
Performance.
Yeah, performance bond. Once you told them that, he may, a lot of these contractors may be able to get the bid bond if they know they don't have to produce a performance bond. That should have never been done until a low bid was determined and you were willing to award it. And you say, oh, okay, can we save some money if we give you a lump at the end payment? We pay you one time at the end project, and you don't have to provide that performance bond. Because contractors buy these bonds, they got bonding service, and then typically, if the bid bonding is not needed, it's just turned back in, they're not charged for it, but they're very often not charged a whole lot of money for the bid bond anyway. It's the performance bond that costs a lot of money. And if they know they're going to have to produce, they don't want to produce, they just say, well, we're going to get, we'll take money at the end of the day. Bonding is really a big can of worms if you've never been involved with it. But the biggest issue that you've got is there's too much diversity between the products that you've been bidding, because one product, it's not even five foot high, can't offer the bid that you're ordering. You've got two Carlisle products in Muhai, which is owned by Carlisle. Muhai's a class C product, the Carlisle is a class N product. You just, you need to look at it, do something, clean this thing up. If it was me, I'd put it out to bid, everything that I'm going to tell you based on what I saw with those seven roof penetrations, and the fact that I know that you've got a lot of HVAC work that's got to be done up there. Forget putting the roof on right now, just pack it, let it go until you get to HVAC work, because you're going to demolish your new roof when you start doing all that HVAC work on it. There's a ton of it, and you, it's going, just going completely under the roof you just put on, even if you have to wait. Because I don't know how the money works, that's, that's your all, gentlemen, you got the back for it, but the bottom line is that HVAC work, there's so much of it, and it's inside and outside, it needs to be done before the new roof is done, because those HVAC units have to be with the, the curves have to be reinstated. You're going to wind up cutting out their units and having to cover that up and try to tie it back into the new roof, or you're going to wind up putting the new units in, or the new roof curves, and try to get them tied back into an existing roof. It's much, much better to have all that stuff done and then come into your new roof, because the only idea is to just lift the unit up a little bit to get the new roof to tie in and flash in. That's where the problem is. You've got, what a roof curve is, is picture this as a box sitting up on top of roof, just like that, okay? What the roof has to do is, has to come up like this, because on top of this box is another box that's got the actual HVAC unit in there. And what they've done, this curve here, the nutwork goes into the new HVAC unit, sets on, has to come, the roof has to come up and flash in, and every time you bust one of those things, it's a nightmare to get it, and it's a nightmare on the roof bottom in the warranty, which means your roof contractor has to come back and do that to maintain the warranty with the manufacturer, the one that you used originally. And somebody screws it up, they're going to come in saying, we need fixing this, we'll carry it off, we'll install it over. And I've seen that happen at least seven or eight times where they didn't listen to what I just said. So think about it before you get into something. Mr. Wolford, I think you heard earlier that wherever you live that...
Yeah, I know, but you got, you got some...
And we certainly will appreciate you...
Well, I want you to be aware of this, because Frank Frank, when I saw that, it was...
Thank you for your comments. Let's move on.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you feel that it's been unethically bid?
I don't know if it has or not.
I mean, that's, that's... Sounds what you're accusing of.
I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I just, what I said was, somebody was awful unknowledgeful.
It seems like you're inferring that somebody bid that in. Well, I'm professionally an appropriator, and I'm just wondering if you're accusing the town and myself of doing anything...
I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just saying, like, that it looked like to me somebody knew more about what was going on up there than you had an engineer do it. Fine, but that's, I don't know who did it.
We bid us three times, we got closed, we bid it twice.
Well, yeah, let's not play the aggressor to the right.
Okay, any additional citizen comments? Okay. They're being, now, let's move down to the attorney's report. Oh, council comments, I'm trying to get this all, let's move to council comments.
Yeah, I just, we've got a couple things, you know, we're seeing enough ticket code that obviously coming back into the area, you know, it's discouraging because I think we thought, you know, maybe we were going to get off easy. But one thing that I've seen, and I know there's nothing the council can really do about, but I just want to talk about it for a minute, you know, we're having a tendency here to attack each other for everything related to, you know, why are people, are kids going to the pool? Why are they having out on playgrounds? Why aren't you wearing a mask? Why are you wearing a mask? So what I would like to do is encourage people just to not attack each other, okay? We're doing difficult jobs. You know, I think what we need to do as Americans, not just Bluefield, Virginia, but Americans, is to remember where this state come from, and that was a reckless handling of a virus from the Chinese government, and it's not none of our fault, okay? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start encouraging people that, when I see it on social media, is just not attack each other. We've got, we've got all our hands full coming up, I think this fall, the school opening up, it's going to be difficult. I think once the numbers start going up, people are going to start looking back at us for, there's some answers and guidance to how, how we're going to protect our citizens. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start encouraging people to uplift each other, to stop attacking each other. I've never seen something like a virus or something like that become a partisan issue. It's become one of the most polarizing partisan issues that I've ever seen, and it's just really discouraging to see people, good people, friends and neighbors, attack each other. So when you see that, man, it's correct, and remind them where it come from, and they come from here, they come from somewhere else, and we need to, we need to remember that. So let's, let's encourage people to uplift each other. Also, if we don't get shut down by the governor, Bluefield, Virginia, Little League goes to compete in the district tournament, we won't have a state tournament this year because of COVID, but we will have a district tournament. So if you can get out and make any of the gangs a little bit of a drive, but come on and encourage and cheer on your little G-men, your future G-men in the baseball tournament.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Yes.
I have a few things. Well, I just have a few things, I always have to give a shout out to the chief over there, police department is awesome, fire department is awesome, and we got our new, one of the two new lawyers here, making you a friendly welcome, and all the girls over the town. And I'll, I'll try to make something, you know, Mike had a good laugh this week, hey, I paid for my EMT license thing, so I'm going to take it and I'm going to go train, and Mike said he passes out, and I can't do mouth to mouth on him, he'd rather die. So that's why it's a, so I just want to let you know that I'm going to volunteer, once I get it, I'm going to volunteer my time and just help out because they have shortage and stuff, so I just did that for the heck of it. So I was letting Boston know about it, so he was, that's what he said, he said, don't touch him. I said, hold it, dude, for me, so. Anyway, that's, that's about it, I think everything's going well, just like Ron's saying, you get on Facebook, and what I've heard is people get in hundred comment arguments with each other, and they're just saying the same stuff about all this mask stuff and everything. So hopefully, at least one good thing that came out yesterday is we're going to have football, it's going to be in a spring, and all the sports are not going to be shut down, so that's a good positive. So hopefully, we can figure a thing else out, that's all I have to say.
Jerry?
I just wanted to say, I went around to all the parks here in the town, and I tell you, it was a beautiful sight, the grass was cut, I mean, everything was looking great, I mean, it was looking great. And I would just like to make one comment about it, if that grass gets up higher, I'd like to see us if it's, if you have to, have the people to rake, because you can tell a big difference if it's not raked. The reason I'm bringing that up, my yard... The reason I'm bringing that up, my yard, got cut the grass, cut the grass, and you know, it didn't break in some place because it got kind of hot, and it looked terrible. And, and the grass, I should have caught him, but he couldn't catch him. Uh, but anyway, I want to say, everything looked great, looked great, the grass, I mean, it was second to none in all the parks, especially if anybody's in the park, go up from the top and look down over to the baseball field and excel, I mean, that was uh, big time, big time. That's all I just want to make.
Well, I guess you realize this is one of the first years we've had problems getting grass curbs.
I know it.
So the crews that's out there, working doubly as hard.
You want, you want one that goes at fifteen dollars an hour? We put it to go all week.
Anyway, that's all I have, uh, let's go back to the attorney's report.
Gentlemen, I only have one item on the, for you to consider tonight. There's a bankruptcy filing in New York relating to Purdue, Purdue Pharmaceuticals. They um, have filed for bankruptcy, and we have until July thirtieth to file a notice of claim relating to that. Purdue Pharmaceuticals was involved, of course, with the opioid. Um, the, the recommendation that we've made to all of our localities, and most of our localities have authorized us to file a notice of claim on their behalf, um, even though you haven't filed a lawsuit, there's a class action pending, and that class action may, and may not, but it may entitle you at some point to receive some sort of funds for the citizens related to the problems that are associated with the opioid abuse that has occurred. Um, if we don't file a proof of claim, uh, with regard, in this bankruptcy case, the town could be excluded from receiving anything pursuant to that class action. Um, by filing a proof of claim, you are not filing a lawsuit, but you are preserving your right to collect under the class action lawsuit. Have I explained that enough to all of you? So we just, we, we've asked all of our localities if you would like us to file that. The, the reason I have to ask you now is, it's due by July thirtieth at five P M., we file it electronically, we've already done it for a bunch of other localities, we're asking for your permission to do it for Bluefield. Uh, the numbers we would use are being provided by the class action lawsuit.
Okay, now, that motion's been made that we.
Second.
In second, any further discussion? Trey?
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you, sir.
Just now we have, first, I'm aware we have an executive session. Kim, would you read these sections and then be going on with this?
It is hereby moved that the Town Council of Bluefield, Virginia, convenes a closed meeting pursuant to section two point two, uh, three, seven, one, one, A, number twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. The specific purpose for this motion is to discuss the following matters. Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including inquiries of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body, with such close meaning being confined to the following subjects. Providing ownership of the water system, the fire contract, and a Bluefield, Virginia, Little League lease agreement.
Chairman, nice, nice of this section, the motion will move.
Move, second.
Only five to seven, five to second half. We always send the council meeting to the attorney's report.
That's nice. Whereas the Town Council of Bluefield, Virginia convened a closed meeting on July the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty pursuant to a duly adopted motion attached hereto, and such close meeting was convened in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas the Town Council of Bluefield, Virginia returns to its opened meeting found on July the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. Now therefore, the Council of the Town of Bluefield, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed meeting found on July the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening such close meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Council of the Town of Bluefield, Virginia, and set to closing.
Mr. Trey?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. This time we will resume the council meeting, the motion we.
Second.
Paul and Clever signify to say that. Okay, gentlemen, anything else to be brought tonight before we adjourn? Are you here on motion, or?
Move, second.
Paul and Clever say that, say that.